This holiday edition of the regular Delray Oaks City Council meeting. We've got some fun things planned for tonight. We'll start off with, we'll call.
Councilmember Louie.
Present.
Councilmember Howlett.
Present.
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Donaldson.
Here.
Please join me in what really. I pledge to the republic of which stands one nation under God, and it is law, and justice for all. Inside of this public comment, general public comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and its council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. There will be a time limit of no more than three minutes per speaker. Public comment is over. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the main event of the evening. It's the seating of the new council, and what we'll do is we'll bring up, oh, I'm sorry. Before we do that, we have a public service announcement from our city attorney.
I just wanted to interrupt the mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, I would like for you to meet Manny Menes, who's an associate at Fenn and Keller, and will be your new assistant city attorney. He is already helping the city, helping me with assignments, and I'd just like to introduce him and put a face with the name, the superstar that are firm, and so, welcome to Manny.
All right. So, the way that we'll do it is we'll start off with our newest council member, Mike Berger, who will be sworn in by our city clerk, Karen's now. Well, Mike, if you could come on up.
Say your name.
Berger.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear to affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
Will well.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties which I am about to enter.
The duties I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
And after we're done with all the swearings in, we'll allow the council members to say their words. So, next up, we have council member Kim Sherwood.
Say your name. Hi, it's Jerky. Do solemnly swear or affirm, do solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support and defend, that I will support and defend, the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For a purpose of evasion.
For a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties which I am about to enter.
The duties which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Say your name.
I'm John Donaldson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duty on which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
First, I'd like to start with council member Mike Berger. Can you comment your work before you go?
Thank you. Very much everyone's support.
Thank you, Mike. Well, welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson. I just want to thank all of you for your support. I take this job seriously, as you know. I I am excited about jumping into another four years and representing all of you very well. I will work hard, and anytime you need anything or you have questions, I'm an open book. Please come see me, and again, thank you for your support. I'm very happy to be here.
I'm incredibly honored to be able to continue to serve as your mayor, and I know I ran unopposed, but I'm truly humbled at so many people taking the time and making the conscious decision to support me. And to me, it shows overall that people are happy with the city council and overall happy with the direction the city is going. And I know that wouldn't be possible without the diligent work of the city council, and I want to congratulate both Kim and Mike for being voted onto the council. I look forward to working with you and also working with our other council members to continue the teamwork that we've established. And speaking of teams, I want to thank the incredible city staff and city manager. Not only are they very talented, but they are completely dedicated to the city and the citizens here in the city. Most of all, I want to thank all of you for putting your trust and confidence in me. I promise to represent this city the best that I can and continue my dedication to all of you, the city's mission, and our future together. So, thank you so much. Now we get to the real exciting stuff. The next item on the agenda is approving the FY 2023-24 annual audit. So with that, Roberto, I'll give it to you and maybe the exciting issue for you.
Mayor Donaldson, I'm Mr. Councilman Rocky Wood, and I'm with Regional Government Services. We provide accounting services to the city, which includes the preparation of the annual audit. This evening, we have with us Paul Pham from Chilwell and Associates, the city's honor, and they work for you. And so, first, we'll have Paul talk a little bit about the audit, and if there's anything left to say, I'll chime in with a few words.
All right, thank you, Councilman Mayor, for inviting me out to share with you the results of the June 30th, 2024 audit. So let me just start out just with the kind of auditing standards, just so you guys know our approach and, you know, what we do in terms of our audit service for the city as independent auditors. So the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, they issue auditing standards that we follow. So there's certain procedures and stuff, and the way we approach the audit is standardized across the industry. The, because the city is a local government, the Government Accountability Office issues government audit standards, which we also adhere to. So those are how we conduct our audit. We came up midway through the year, we assessed the city's internal control and documented those, and some sampling and testing of that sort. And when the year was over, your team closed their books, we came out, we completed the remainder of our audit compliance-wise and things of that sort, and then crunched a number substantiating the balances at the end. So that was our audit process, and then finally, the report preparation and the review. So I am presenting the audit results to you. If I could reference you in the report to this is on sorry, I've got a little bit here. Page seven, this is going to be the summary of net position. Okay, so this is, you've got assets, which basically what the city owns, you see there, an increase over last year of $250,000. Overall, your net position, kind of like the city's worth, you know, net of the liabilities. You've got an increase over last year of $135,000, just $136,000, bringing the city at a net position of just under $21 million. So that's a fairly strong net position to have. On the next table on page eight, I just highlighted a couple of the kind of key highlights for the year. You see, for the revenue overall, had $236,000 dollar increase, a big part of that was coming from charges for service. Those seem like some of the servicing of the city charges for, that's going up, and at the bottom there, you see investment earnings, so that's a good sign. You know, the economy's picking up, the investments, you know, where the city's putting its money, it's getting good returns. Overall, in terms of public services, you see, you know, a lot of, there's large increases in general government of $455,000. But in fact, this is as of June of 2024. And so that rounds it all up, taking, you know, net $136,000 at the bottom, you see, in terms of the change in net position. If there are any questions on the numbers, I'll go right into the audit results.
Any questions, we'll council. Okay, continue.
All right, so we had a clean audit, a modified opinion, the financial statements were presented in all material respects. Just one second. And when it comes to internal controls of financial reporting and compliance, our audit, we didn't identify anything that was required to be disclosed under government auditing standards. Overall, with the audit, we had no significant unadjusted, incorrect adjustments, no difficulties during our audits, no disagreements with management. So overall, a good clean audit, so you can do a great job there.
So, as Paul mentioned, the audit was a nice, clean audit, the opinion was associated, and all of that is due to staff's work. You know, so it's just numbers here, it took a whole year processing payroll, gas table, all of those things, they test those things, and again, it's a reflection on staff's work during the year, that the numbers are as they are. What Paul referred to was the government white statements, which keep the city as a whole. However, a lot of that, you really, assets you can't spend the streets under like you can't, and a lot of the money that comes in is provided by the federal government of the state, and you really don't have that much control. So I'd like to just briefly talk about the general fund, which is what everybody kind of really, that's what you control and you have access to. So on page 15 of the financial statements is the statement of revenues, expenses, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, which really is the city's, well, the general fund, kind of an income statement, the way governments work, and the main thing on the general fund, by now, the city's up to 4.9 million, almost $5 million in revenue in the general fund, and expand 4.4 million in expenses to run the city, basically, and then another $117,000 in other uses with some transfers. So for the year, though, the city had a net change surplus of $419,000, basically $120,000 rounded up. So it was a good year, $120,000 on revenues of almost $5 million. All expenses were covered, everything is good. Yeah, so keep that number in mind, $120,000 is a surplus for the year, and then you go back to page 13, this is the city's balance sheet for the general fund. And the main point of interest here is in the fund balances, and some of those are, this is kind of like the net worth, but only for certain items. Some of it's restricted, portion that's of most interest to everybody is the other side, money that's available to use. You'll see there's 1.6 million for economic uncertainties, that's money that the council has already set aside. This is in case things go wrong, something happens, this has happened in the past. They have 1.6 million to take care of those things. In addition to that, because of that $120,000 surplus, the unappropriated fund balance is $1.6 million. So that is money that hasn't been decided by the council how to use it just yet. And we will be coming back in mid-year, which will be in February, with mid-year budget adjustments to consider how you want to utilize these funds. But it's a good thing to have, you have actually money that you can do something with. So the general fund is in good standing. The only other item to take note of this, in the notes, there is, the only debt the city has is some debt that's been around for a while, which will also be considered at mid-year, it's in the notes too. For long-term debt, which is long-term liabilities, note six, down on page 32. You'll see that there's some purchase agreements totaling $87,975, those are budgets in the next few years, every year, your budget to pay for some of these leases, so those we don't really worry about. The loans payable are the ones that are, they've been here for a while, there's the 1.2 million to the federal group, and then $444,000 in accrued interest, those are the items, probably the only other debt the city has is, because besides that, there's a Tennessee Measure X loan, that's paid automatically from the Measure X monies that the city would otherwise receive. It's been being down every year, probably another five years that you go away. So all in all, the city is in pretty good shape, and we will be coming back in mid-year to look at some of these surpluses to see how best to use them. We presented this to the finance committee, we have more time, and we're both through the numbers in detail, I can't really highlight everything on the big screen, but if you've seen the numbers there that you would like more information on or have a question on, by all means, there's nothing I have to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I'll start with the council, with any questions or comments that you might have, and I'll start with council member Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to say again, thank you, Roberto, for a great presentation. Always like to hear the words clean audit, and the city's in good shape, particularly because during your last visits, we, although we were in a healthy state of solvency, there was some skepticism, indeterminate, indeterminate nationally acknowledge, on a civic level and on a personal level, I'm sure we're all happy that is not the case, and feeling very good about it, thank you.
Right, councilor Sherwood.
Oh, thank you. I do want to thank the staff and Roberto for your work on this budget, or on this audit. Just in the process of doing it, but also throughout the year, I know you're constantly making adjustments and making things more clear. And I really appreciate that, because that's going to help the smoothing board, and it makes the audit, I'm sure, go a lot smoother, so I just want to thank you for that work. I don't have any questions, since I was on the finance committee, we talked, but I do want to say that, Roberto, I'm happy you mentioned that in mid-year, we are going to be looking at some policy reserves, or policy in terms of our reserves, and how we're going to maybe spend some of that money. I would also hope that we move forward with strategic planning soon, so that we can use that opportunity as a council to talk about how we might want to use that money we've earned. I think that'd be really important, it'd be important for our residents to have some input on that, too. I know our finance meetings are on Fridays at noon, and no one comes except for Mike and sometimes Dennis, so I'd like more input on that. And then another thing, Roberto, that you mentioned that we're going to do in the future, too, is looking at our unfunded liabilities from Calpers, and how we might want to pay those down or treat those, so I look forward to seeing that in the future, too. Yeah, in the mid-year budget, like, all of this is, you know, and I'm just really pleased with this outcome of the audit, I'm pleased with our budget, and I look forward to working on next year's response.
Right, I'm just remember Berger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, Roberto, thank you so much for your, for your whole team, for helping us with this audit and also with our budget. But most of all, I would like to applaud the city hall staff for making our city richer. Well, I mean, I'm happy to see the budget, we have access funds, and, but it's all because of your hard work. We're really, like, spending in our means, so, so thank you from the bottom of my heart, yeah. That's all, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, just echo from all the other council members, thank you so much for everything that you do. Also to the staff, particularly John, who has taken a few years now to get things in order and getting it to the point that it is now. So, yeah, great news across the board, really appreciate it. I'll take it out to the public, are there any public comments?
Hi, I'm Dennis Solian for Los Cineos Drive. Just a couple of real quick things here. Number one, I want to thank Roberto for pointing out that we still have a federal debt that we owe, and I pretty much communicated my feelings on that to all of you with regards to, let's not ignore that, it's there. If you take that into consideration, that really cuts into how much money, discretionary money, the city actually has. And if you figure out that all of the funds that are sitting there are designated for things, I can't remember all those numbers now off the top of my head, that's close to about $13 million that's that are designated for specific projects, and we can't really spend that money until we get something going on the, or South Bounder Grove. The other thing is that the citizens of Delray Oaks deserve a big round of applause, too, because we're, we are the ones that during the past administration, that passed, the citizens voted on and passed the measures to increase the transit, to get this transient occupancy tax going, to get the add-on sales tax, which has been a huge help in getting our revenue up. There was a pretty bleak time during the 1990s and into the mid-2000s, when we didn't have any money, we were living, Karen and and I can't remember who it.
Karen and Kim.
Yeah, Karen and Kim were basically saying, hey, we will pay our bills eventually, trust us. But, so, it's great that we have the money we have, and I'm glad that you're going to take a look at maybe paying down that federal debt. You know, despite the fact that we might never have to pay that, John, it's still there, and we may have to pay it someday. It's costing us more money every year. The argument can be made that that is not really costing us, but it was 50, what was it, 50-some thousand dollars this year in interest on that debt to federal, so let's not ignore that. Thank you.
Hey, any other public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion to approve the FY 2023-24 annual audit.
Move to Berger.
Second, yes, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes unanimously. I'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda, is there anyone amongst the council that would like to pull any items?
Mayor, can I, I'm not pulling an item. The seating of the new council has a resolution that we need to have a a motion for.
Okay, that's not in the consent agenda, sorry.
No, that's.
Oh, okay, let me, let me go back to that.
Sorry.
I'll accept a motion for the seating of the new council.
All right. Go ahead, councilmember Louie.
Okay, I will approve the seating of the of the Mayor Scott Donaldson, council member Shirley, and council member Mike Berger.
Okay, and I think second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, we'll go on to the approval of the annual audit, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, motion passes. Move on to the consent agenda. Any items anyone wants to pull? Amongst the council.
I'd like to pull C4 and C5.
C4 and C5. Any other council members? Okay, take it out to the public, are there any items on the consent agenda that any of the public would like to pull? Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to item C4, which is consider approval of the let me go back here, can I have a motion to approve all the items minus C4 and C5? So, okay.
I second.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now we'll go to item C4, which is to consider approval of the 2025 regional agency boards and committees appointment list. Councilmember Sherwood.
Yeah, I have a question. First, Mayor Donaldson, I want to thank you for, well, I want to thank you for me, placing me back on my boards that I, that I'm on. It's honestly one of my most favorite parts of this job, is representing all of you on these regional boards, I'm learning so much, I'm working really hard. And I just, I really, really enjoy that part of my job, so thank you for having me for that community and putting me back on those boards, I appreciate it. I do want to comment a bit on the, one of our core values in our city is open communication and transparency, and part of being on the boards is also doing council reports and letting constituents know where our mind is, what we're thinking, what we're doing, so that you all know. And so, I, you know, I just want to emphasize how important I think that is for our regional appointments. For example, last month, I read councilmember Louie's report, and I was shocked at finding what was going on with seaside sanitation. And I was really happy that he stood up for Delray Oaks, and was a really strong representative there, so I thanked him for that. So I just think it's, it's really valuable for us to know what's going on racially with everyone, and so I just wanted to take that time to sort of thank councilmember Louie for his reports. And I'd really like to encourage Councilmember Hellick and Mayor Donaldson to also do council reports. I'd love to know what's going on at Community Human Services. And then also with Emma and Water, you're gonna be back on that committee. I am an alternate, I'd love to know kind of where you're thinking, what's going on in that committee. So this is my love for council reports from everyone. For, well, it just, if you're on a committee and you participate during the month, I would like, I would like to see a report, because we don't have, yeah, we don't have any time during the meeting to verbally report. Everything is written, so. And then my, my last question I have is on the city committees. I was wondering how do we, with the finance meeting, I know that the city managers calls those meetings. If we want to, if we think that there's an item that should be seen in one of these city committees, wondering how do we go about calling it?
Yeah, so that's communication with the city manager, the city manager and I coordinate those.
But you're, but see, that's a thing, you're on every committee, so I don't want, I'm gonna be careful of the Brown Act. So maybe I need some advice from the city attorney.
The thing is, be to work through the city manager.
So then he should, should he talk to the mayor?
He can talk to the mayor, as long as there's not a feedback of what people are thinking and talking about the issues. City manager can receive a new request, and if it's the mayor that's helping schedule, then there's two of you, and I think that can be
Well, there's three of us on the committee.
On the committee.
On the committee, so if
The committees are, but if you had a topic that you would like that committee to consider, you could work through the city manager.
And then, and then does he have to work with the mayor?
Depends on how they do it. If he, the mayor, were to put it on the agenda, that's still you and the mayor should be, less than that.
But that's, if the mayor and I are on the same committee.
Right, the ass committee itself would be a notice project.
Right, but us, him knowing my position on the topic. Like, if I get the city manager, I say, I want to talk about X, and these are my feelings on X, I'd like to talk about that. And he says, okay, let me talk to the mayor. Councilmember Shirley wants to have a meeting, she wants to talk about X.
It's like to place on the agenda, yeah.
But I wouldn't share your opinion on it, just that.
And the Brown Act is the one that's very vital to this.
Right, that's great, great. So as long as he doesn't say how I feel about.
To others, yeah, then that would be reserved for the notice meeting.
Okay, okay. And so, are is there gonna be kind of judgment, I mean, like, how frequently are we gonna be able to have these meetings, I guess? Because we've never, we've had one public safety meeting. And with none of the other committees have ever met, so.
Yeah, so my goal with that is not just to have a meeting, just to have a meeting. So if there are all issues or there are concerns, definitely share that with the city manager. And he'll talk with me, and we'll see if we can get something scheduled for that.
All right. Thank you.
No other questions or comments on item C4? The rest of the council, any comments, questions on item C4? Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve item C4.
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
I, oh, I'm sorry, let me take that out to the public. Public comments regarding item C4.
Louise Gethse, Delray Oaks, the Oaks. I just want to thank you for recommending that I serve another two years on the Skid Oak pavement district. It sounds strange, but we do a lot of work, a lot of good work. And I greatly appreciate being able to represent the city of Delray Oaks on that. Thank you.
Any other public comment on item C4? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, we'll move on to item C5, which is to approve the modification of the position control list. Salary schedule for promotion of Chief Burgwijn to the position of Assistant City Manager/Greek Police. Councilmember Shirley.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Chris, Chief Police Chief Chris Burgwijn, for stepping up. I know that you already have a hard job, and now we're asking you to do more. And so I just want you to know that I appreciate you, I completely trust you, I'm excited to have you in this position. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to say thank you.
Thanks. All of you, thank you to my city manager, if you're interested. And I accept only the worst jobs.
Any other comments from the city council? Take it out to the public, any comments on item C5? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept the motion to approve item C5.
Move to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next item is old business, we have none. Staff reports and correspondence are in the packet. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 28th, at 6:00 PM. We have refreshments and I guess cake in the hallway waving for us. So with that, we are adjourned.